Meetings in order. We're going to ask everyone to stand if they are willing and able for the invocation given by Pastor Catherine Nellie Burton of Grace Presbyterian Church, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, welcome. The floor is yours.
Let us pray. Gracious God, by day and night, we pour out our prayer to you. We cry out for justice, yearning for what is right, longing for your peace. We hear of violence, senseless death, right here in our city. We feel the suffering, sorrow, and shame of the oppressed. We see the fatigue in those who serve our city as this virus and this violence linger. And so we ask you, gracious God, replenish our strength and stir up our hope as we look for signs of your coming reign and fill us with the peace that passes, understanding the deep peace of Jesus Christ, in whose holy name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) to fly to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on February 2nd, 2021?
Does every member had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion of the minutes? There is no discussion, I will make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk open the roll, members cast a vote. The result of six yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
The next item is a proclamation for National Burn Awareness Week.
So I will read the proclamation. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas burn injuries continue to be one of the leading causes of accidental death and injury in our nation, where tragically children, the elderly, and the disabled are especially vulnerable to burn injuries. And whereas annually, the United States, approximately 400,000 people receive medical care for treatment of burn injuries. Whereas the primary cause of injury includes fire, flame, skilled, contact with hot objects, electrical, and chemicals, most of the injuries occur in the home. Whereas National Burn Awareness Week Initiative of the American Burn Association is coming together with burn, fire, and life-saving educators to make the public aware of the frequency devastation and cause of burn injury and now therefore be a result at I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do your mind of claim the week of February 7th through 13th, 2021, as Burn Awareness Week in the City of Wichita and call upon government agencies, fire, health, and care organizations, and the community to observe this week with the appropriate ceremonies and activities. Madam Clerk.
Next is the public agenda. First speaker is Rob Grant regarding WPD.
Chair will divert our... The floor to Century Two. The first speaker, Mr. Grant, you have five minutes. Thank you for being here and welcome.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rob Grant. My address is 315 South Hydraulic, and I own a home in District One. On January 24th, 2021, I was driving from my house to the gym. I live downtown and go to the gym on a regular basis. This trip to the gym changed my life. I heard police sirens and was immediately hit by a car. I do not remember hitting the building. I remember regaining my senses and realizing something really bad had happened. I got out of my truck and I fell multiple times. I was really scared, and I realized immediately that the police had been pursuing somebody. And I first thought an officer had hit me. I could see four or five officers standing with their guns out. I was scared. No one had ever come over to me to see if I was okay. I was not rendered aid because they had their guns out on the suspect. Eventually, I received contact from an officer and I was very, very emotionally distraught. I remember telling the officer that I do not agree with them chasing people downtown because it is so dangerous in a residential or downtown areas. I have never understood this. The risks to innocent people are so high. My family arrived on the scene, and I'm not sure how I walked away with no major physical injuries, but my emotional and mental state have been significantly altered. Every time I think about the impact, I have a physical reaction. Every day since I was hit, I feel extreme emotions about how it could have been one of my sons, and now I could have died. My family has been indirectly involved in something like this before, and it has hurt us both times. I have a lot of guilt now. I was not able to work for a week due to having no car and trying to figure out how to replace it. That truck was the first car I have ever owned on my own, and it was paid off. I love that truck. This is a burden on my family and our lives went into a tailspin in an instant because of this wreck that may have been avoidable if she wasn't being chased. The amount of work it has taken for us to navigate has been exhausting. My truck wasn't at the tow place, we were told. We have been given no help from the police. We can't even get a police report for six weeks. How am I supposed to move forward with all of these blocks, none of which are my fault? Once I located my truck, I had to pay the tow company. I wouldn't have had to pay that. This is where I live. What could she have done to need... I mean, what could she have done to be chased? She wasn't a serial murderer. She hadn't just robbed someone at gunpoint. In fact, I was told at some point it was just a traffic stop and she took off. Why not let her go? Why not catch up with her later? Her life is forever changed as well, and I'm not sure she is even the bad guy in this situation. I am now wary of driving. I am scared to go through intersections. I have concern for the people who have already lost their lives and for the rest of us, whose lives are forever changed. For those of us struggling to get ahead and then hit with costs that was not planned, and it could have been avoided. I am sad that my neighborhood feels unsafe from police chases. I have been a safe driver my whole life. I have never once caused an accident. And on January 24th, I was being as safe as I ever been. Please stop chasing anyone in downtown Wichita. Our lives and livelihoods matter, and these situations are not easily navigated by an average citizen. I was minding my own business and going to the gym. My life will always have this as a defining point that harmed not only me, but my family as well. Please stop chasing in downtown Wichita. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Marquise Tony, WPD.
Have you gotten help from them at all?
None.
My husband...
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Marlon Tony.
Yeah, you can take your desk.
My name is Marlon Tony, and I live in District One. In May of 2019, I played my violin for my East High IB graduation ceremony. I left East High to go to Century Two for an award ceremony. As I approached Douglas End Market, I came across a terrible wreck that had just happened. I went around and I did not stop because I could see that help was being rendered, but I could see the wreckage was devastating. I went to my award show, and just after it had gotten started, I received a call from my girlfriend at the time. Her family had been in the wreck that I had just seen. I was shocked. Events unfolded quickly, and I received the news that two of her family members had been killed. I understood that this wreck was the end of a police chase that had begun downtown. The days and weeks following were very hard for me. I provided support to my then-girlfriend, and I was forever changed. I struggled to go to school. I couldn't concentrate, and I had a difficult time moving forward, watching the devastation, and realizing that I had seen the wreckage and knew how bad it was. It took me a long time to recover from what I saw and how it impacted someone so close to me. On January 24th, I received a call from my mom that my stepdad had a wreck and needed help. I was closer to the location, and she asked me to go to him and try to comfort him because of how distraught he was on the phone. I headed that way. Minutes later, she called me back and told me that this wreck had been as a result of the beginning of a police chase. So she wanted to prepare me and knew it would be traumatic with the similarities and circumstances. I couldn't find my stepdad. He wasn't quite sure where he told us he was. He was having a hard time communicating. My mom made it there before me. I walked onto a scene that shocked me a little. My stepdad was visibly staked and emotional. He was hugging me over and over, telling me that I needed a bigger car because if this had been me, I would not have made it. I have never seen him like this before. It was hard. As I tried to comfort him, I started realizing how close we were to the wreck that impacted me before. I felt very strange about it. The location, the circumstances were all the same, except for the fatalities. My stepdad didn't receive help directly after the wreck. He told us he got himself out of his car and stumbled several times. I don't understand why no one went over to help him immediately. I understand now that he refused the ambulance, but I'm not sure that he was in the best state of mind to make that decision. My mom was very upset on the scene, as I could understand. It doesn't seem like the police learned anything from the wreck that had already deeply impacted me. We live downtown. This is our neighborhood. This is the second time an event like this has impacted my life. I don't think innocent bystanders should be at risk because of pursuits in downtown areas. The risk seems so great, and for what? I am sure the lady driving didn't murder anyone, yet my stepdad could have been killed. I am still processing what all has happened. I do not support initiating a pursuit in downtown or residential areas. Lives are at stake. Innocent people have to pick up the pieces. While we didn't lose a life this time, we lost property, and I can see the harm it's causing day after day as my parents try to figure out what to do. Please stop initiating or having pursuits in downtown Wichita.
Next speaker, please.
Marlon Tony, WPD.
I think that was Marlon. I could be wrong.
Mayor, that was Marquise.
That was Marquise. Okay. My apologies. I missed the names.
No, that was, in fact, Marlon, not Marquise.
So you're Marquise. Okay. Welcome.
Yeah.
Sorry, I have you on my list out of order, I guess. But you have five minutes, and we're glad you're here.
Thank you. My name is Marquise Tony. I live in District One, and I'm upset over what took place on January 24th and the crash that Rob was involved in. I feel that was completely arbitrary and an unnecessary thing that didn't need to happen. This isn't the first time I've been involved in a situation like this. Two years ago, a friend of mine had family that was killed in a car crash that took place as a result of a police chase. Both of these events came out of nowhere because by nature, police chases happen randomly without warning. This is something that could happen to anybody. I don't think that this is right, nor do I feel that the way this was handled was right. I personally felt that the officers involved did not seem all that compassionate or understanding to what was going on. I don't think it is fair to put innocent people in potentially deadly and life-threatening situations if the point of a police officer's job is to protect and serve people. I'm angry that my family and I have had to deal with the aftermath of something like this twice. I'm angry at watching my stepdad struggle. This is our neighborhood. This is where I live, and I want my streets to be safe from unnecessary pursuits that cause permanent damage to innocent people. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Kelly Grant, WPD.
Welcome.
Hi.
Also, if I may.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Kelly Grant, and I own a home in District One. I think it's clear from my family that pursuits in downtown Wichita have had a significant and profound impact on all of us. As a mom of a traumatized and grieving son who saw the wreckage two years ago, I can tell you that the feelings of helplessness and desperation were intense. I watched my son struggle to get out of bed. I watched a whole group of teenagers gather at my house time and again to cry, support each other, and grieve. It changed all of us forever. On January 24th, when I was told that a pursuit had been initiated and my husband had been flung in as a result, I was first shocked and then livid. Seeing the loss of property took my breath away. Watching Rob in an emotional state I had never seen him in was shocking to me. I did not hold back my words or emotions related to the second blow my family has experienced. The amount of time, energy, and money needed to navigate the past two weeks have been unplanned and are immense. I was once a single mom on welfare, and I know I could not have recovered from this if this had happened during those years. We read these statements to WPD on January 29th with Commissioner Cruz present. We were advised that WPD is willing to work with us on policy considerations and change. However, Rob still does not have a police report, and we have received no communication from the Wichita Police Department. Police pursuits are inherently dangerous, and many departments have issued no pursuit policies across the United States. Pursuits often cause an officer to develop tunnel vision, which is a biological reaction. Police chases kill about one person per day in the United States more than floods, tornadoes, hurricanes, and lightning combined. There are not readily available statistics on how many pursuits end in a crash of an innocent bystander that is not fatally injured, nor is there much available on the costs related to property damage like the buildings that have been hit in both of these situations. The risk to the public is an aggravating factor when considering a pursuit. It is well-known that cars can be classified as deadly weapons when utilized in a reckless or harmful way. I made one social media post regarding this wreck with pictures. In the course of responses to this post, I received numerous comments and many private messages from citizens who have experiences related to police pursuits. Of course, many stories were connected to the Ginnwood tragedy, but there are others as well. A teacher whose young student lost one parent and had one parent permanently disabled. A friend who recently moved from the suburbs to downtown reached out. She witnesses police speeding through intersections every single day. She's shocked because she had no idea for the disregard for pedestrian safety was so great in our downtown. Another friend who was sitting in a drive-thru and witnessed a pursuit, she was so scared, she was unable to drive for several minutes. These are just a few examples. There are more. Needless to say, the stories I was privileged to hear did not leave a favorable impression regarding trust between citizens and the police, which is unfortunate. To fully consider the risks at play regarding police pursuits, it would be remiss to look over the fact that African-Americans are more likely to be killed by pursuit and more likely to be chased in urban areas. While this fact may not be the case in this situation, it is a statistic worth consideration in weighing the risk to all of our community members. The reality of this situation is not minimal. In fact, it's quite grave. Today, our downtown isn't walkable without significant risk. I have two young nieces I would love to take downtown to look at our outdoor art when they visit Wichita. Right now, that's not an option for us. I would never be able to live with myself if their little bodies were splattered on a building by a pursuit that lost control. Our community has been harmed as a result of police-initiated pursuits in downtown Wichita. There is good news, though. Restorative justice efforts are extremely effective and facilitate higher levels of trust when implemented between police and communities. Over the last 23 years, I've done work on policies. I've changed policies, and I've been involved in creating new processes within the criminal justice system. I have been involved with changing a parole condition. I'm in the last stages of my PhD that is focused on these exact social and criminal justice issues. Councilwoman Cindy Claycombe has taken time to meet with me and has agreed to engage in this process from the bench in support. We're ready to engage the community and the Citizens Review Board to get this moving. I've done all the research, and I have a draft policy created and ready for you that is aimed at protecting all people that live, visit, or want to visit downtown Wichita. To close, I want to quote Corporal Justin Thompson, who wrote an important paper for the Criminal Justice Institute School of Law Enforcement Supervision. He stated, quote, "I will be the first to admit, when I started this paper, I thought the research would show that changing a pursuit policy to reduce the number of pursuits would be harmful to the community and to the police, enabling violators to flee at will. But after educating myself, I realized that most of the pursuits we initiate are not worth the risk." This is a call to action. I love Wichita. My family loves Wichita, and Wichita is ready for this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Claycomb.
Thank you. I just want to thank Ms. Grant and her family for being here today. As she mentioned, we have met, and I have also spoken with Chief Ramsey about this, and I have agreed to sit down with the Police Department and Ms. Grant to talk about this. I also suggested, as she mentioned, that the Wichita Citizens Review Board would be a good place to start also because in their mission, they advise the Police Department about community concerns. So I will continue to work with Ms. Grant and the Police Department.
Other comments? We thank everyone who took a moment to show up for public, the public agenda, and express their concerns that we can further look into better ways to serve our public. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 19.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to pull any items. I just want to highlight items eight and nine. Midnight housing continuing to build, new homes in District One, bringing families opportunities for homeownership. I always want to highlight the good work that they do and the other organizations. That's all.
Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. I don't know that it's really necessary to pull item six, but I just want to get clarification from the manager. Item six is a grant for assistance for a firefighter grant program, and I believe the council had received a letter of support of this from the IAFF regarding the cancer screenings. This would satisfy that request?
Mayor, councilmember, yes, it would, for a three-year period.
Okay. Thank you.
I will pull this item as we have the request for this item to be pulled, as we have the representative of the Wichita firefighters here, so that that person can confirm that the question. So item six will be... Is it item six? Will be pulled and placed underneath the consent agenda. Any other comments on the consent agenda? If not, I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda items except for item six.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Clerk open the roll. With the result of six yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. We are on item six, the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program. I wanted to, as the councilmember Fry has mentioned, we believe that this is the program that has been in support, but by pulling it, it allows further public discussion in case there is anyone who would like to speak to this item. I know that we do have firefighters here in case they want to add more to it. If not, then I'll make a motion to accept item six.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. If not, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Report of four bids and contracts dated February 8th, 2021.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Melinda Walker, Purchasing Manager. For engineering, we have our 2021 OP-3 joint and crack seal phase two, awarding a recommendation of PPJ Construction Inc. for $225,000. For purchasing, we have sewer treatment network hardware, Converge One, $117,033.11. We have liquid magnesium chloride for dust control in Virotech for $1.39 for an annual contract. Robotic system for the internal lateral pipe repair for sewer maintenance. Sewage treatment, recommendation Swam USA, $431,370. And we also have our website up here if you would like to become a registered vendor with the City of Wichita or contact the purchasing office. We currently have three requests for proposals on our website for a multimodal facility, a search firm for director of libraries, and housing case management software. And approve the bid awards as recommended.
Any questions of staff? Discussion on the item? If there's no discussion on the item, then I will make the motion to take staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contract, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk open the roll, members cast a vote. Result of six yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Convention Center 2021 budget allocation.
Chair recognizes Dante Martin, Assistant Manager of the City.
Good morning, Mayor Whipple. Members of City Council, Dante Martin, Assistant City Manager. The first item I'm here to present is the budget allocation 2021 for the Convention Center. As background, as you're aware, Century Two has been managed by city staff since 1969. Traditionally, Century Two has operated at an operational deficit. The deficit has been offset by transient guest tax. During last year's budget process, in addition to the operating budget being eliminated, the annual transfer from the transient guest tax fund was also eliminated. In 2020, Century Two was significantly affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Shows and events, as well as regional meetings and touring shows canceled. In 2021, we are starting to see some shows being scheduled. We have a home show coming up here in a few weeks. Our regional meetings and touring shows scheduled for 2021. In addition to that, we have meeting space and large halls that are continuing to be rented. Just an example of a few shows that we have planned in addition to the home show. We have a graduations book. We have Music Theater Wichita on Symphony hoping to have shows this year. Also, the American Theater Guild, which brings traveling Broadway shows to Wichita, hopes to have something in the third quarter of 2021. During last year's budget process, the decision was made to consider outsourcing management of Century Two. As a result, a draft RFP was created to solicit proposals for outsourced management. The goal of the RFP is to reduce the operating deficit and also to position Century Two for post-pandemic success. Until the RFP process is complete, and if the City Council approves a contract with an outsourced management company, Century Two will continue to be operated by city staff. Currently, there are approximately 10 full and part-time staff that operate the facility. Prior to last year's budget reductions, there were close to 30 staff budgeted for 2021. Financial considerations. We estimate approximately $2 million in general fund expenditures required in 2021 to operate the facility. This is based on what was experienced in the second half of 2020, both as far as staffing levels and also shows that were able to be presented in light of the local health orders. We anticipate those expenditures of $2 million will be partially offset by revenues totaling approximately $600,000. As we discussed earlier, any unrecovered expenditures can be offset by the transient guest tax fund. It is recommended that the City Council approve the necessary budget adjustments, authorize the expenditure budget in 2021 for the Convention Center, and authorize staff to take necessary actions to operate the facility with city staff. I'm available for questions, as well as Mark Manning from the Finance Department.
Questions from staff? None at this time. I will open up to discussion. Oh, we have Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. Dante, I just want to make sure I understand something here. The... We say that any unrecovered expenditures will be offset by a transfer from the transient guest tax fund. In late in our consent packet, we had the Visit Wichita monthly financial report for the, I believe it's for year-to-date, showing that the transient guest tax revenue was about 1.65. So are there reserves that would help cover that? I mean, because otherwise, they have no money to do anything for the rest of the year.
I think Mark Manning is probably better suited to answer your question.
Okay.
Your son, Councilmember Fry, the transient guest tax fund does maintain a decent reserve and even more beneficial to this action today. You may recall that last year, we did not transfer approximately $1.4 million that was scheduled to be transferred in 2020, and that boosted the reserves in the transient guest tax fund, which will basically enable them to subsidize Century Two this year.
Thank you. That's what I was hoping you would say. I just want to make the... I just want to make sure people understand.
Just a reminder, the balance that we traditionally have kept there has been for capital projects, so if we use it for operations, that's fewer dollars we have available for capital.
Thank you.
Further questions of staff? Open up to public comment? Welcome.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mayor Whipple and City Council members. I am glad to hear that you are keeping a minimum of staff to run Century Two because truly they are the only ones who know the ins and outs of the building, how to keep it running, and how to smooth the transition with exhibitions that are scheduled this year. Century Two Performing Arts and Convention Center is the property of Wichita taxpayers, not a private company that may come in to manage it. Seventeen thousand two hundred and sixty-five citizens signed our petition to keep the building. I'm not in favor of the request for a proposal, but I'll talk about that in the next agenda item. Let me point out something in the slide that was just presented that you may have forgotten, but Century Two finances were never expected to break even. Let me repeat that. Century Two finances were never expected to break even. It was always expected to operate at a loss. Why? To subsidize performances by nonprofit groups in Concert Hall, like the Wichita Symphony Orchestra, to subsidize rent for local exhibits, to subsidize charity car shows in Exhibition Hall. The whole reason the hotel guest tax, or what you call the transient guest tax, was created for was to pay for the operating costs of Century Two. Charter ordinance number two-two-one says, "This is the first priority of funding from the hotel guest tax." And yet, you took two point five million from the hotel guest tax and gave it away freely to millionaire Jim Corrick to build his Fairfield Inn in Waterwalk. The bond debt issued on this giveaway will cost taxpayers over four million to pay off. Four million, that's because it's two point five in principal and another one point five million in interest that these bonds are costing taxpayers because you raided the hotel guest tax to give him this freebie. You let Visit Wichita drain the hotel guest tax to build their slush fund of three million in cash and securities, and I haven't heard anyone on city council address the fact that Visit Wichita has built up cash and investment balances in their financial statement. In fact, I'm requesting today that when you publish their income statement, I want to see their balance sheet as well on a monthly basis so that everybody can see this buildup in cash and securities. Why are they building up a fund in cash and securities? You also let Executive Ruffin have the exclusive catering contract for Century Two, taking the food and beverage profits and the Century Two meeting room rental income, all because he took the Hyatt Hotel off our hands. And yet, we citizens lost twelve million dollars on the Hyatt Hotel sale. It was a bad business decision made by city hall. And there may be more money you gave away that I haven't found yet in the city's financial records. Perhaps Jim Corrick has received money for other hotels and other areas of Wichita from the hotel guest tax. I'm not done searching. This diverted income should have been used to cover Century Two's operating costs. So when you publicize the operating deficit, remember you've raided the hotel guest tax that was created to take care of the expenses of Century Two, and charter ordinance number two-two-one says this is the first priority of funding for the hotel guest tax. Mark Manning mentioned that the hotel guest tax goes for fund maintenance. That's correct. Thank you, Mark, for mentioning that, and that it's got a decent reserve. So hire these individuals who know Century Two best, expand the budget so they can do, continue to do their job of maintaining the operations, and we're starting to book conventions and exhibits. I think that's great. And Leighton, if you're worried about having enough capital to repair Century Two or to build capital projects to help Century Two, you know what? There's a twenty-five percent historic tax credit that you could be tapping right now to help with those expenses, and yet I didn't hear it mentioned not once in this presentation. So let me tell you again. Now that Century Two and the former public library are on the historic registry, you can apply for historic tax credits, just like other successful businessmen have, to take care of the building and pay for its capital costs. Maybe you didn't know that, but I hope today you've learned something new and will apply for help in the expenses of maintaining Century Two. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have one more speaker to this item. Welcome.
Hi, guys. It's Monica Marks. I, I was here to listen on the police issue and just wanted to speak real quick on Century Two. I've always supported the Save the Century Two campaign due to the fact that we can't afford any, anything else. As Celeste pointed out, we've lost money on every major development that we've had. Hyatt, the arena, the ballpark that's sitting empty. So we definitely don't need to build anything else. We should fix this building that's half the age of my house, so I'm aware that it can probably be upgraded. That being said, we are using this building for an inappropriate cause right now. There are, at the, at the most busy this room has been today, there were nine people in here. This room is a fraction of the size of the city hall council chamber room, and we should not be segregating democracy over here. We should have not been relegated to a room across town. We should have been able to come in and speak in person to you guys directly about every issue going on. There is a downward trend in COVID right now. They've opened the schools, they've eased restrictions on bars, and this feels weird and wrong over here, like we're not allowed into the city hall building. So I'm going to keep pushing on that and keep asking you guys why we're opening up things in the town but not the city hall meetings.
Councilmember Bluebough?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, do we have a timeline as to when we anticipate the public will be able to come back into our chambers? I think we've been doing it to county for quite a while, haven't we?
Actually, no, the county meetings are still closed. We checked on that yesterday. Councilmember Frye asked me to consider that last week, and we're talking about that at the staff level right now.
Thanks. Can we have someone who's a medical professional give us some advice on that as well? My concern is basing this off of what other institutions are doing isn't really, because I think that other institutions, such as schools, have a different perspective considering the services a school provides to children and allowing folks to go to work. It's a different set of scenarios than, let's say, city hall where we can effectively have a live conversation with someone at Century Two. I just don't want any more of our employees to catch this and perish. So, you know, if there's any policy, let's hope that it's based on medical science and not on pressure. All right, so I think we're done with discussion on this topic.
We have one more speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Another one? Yes, very good then.
Sorry. We have two additional speakers now.
Two additional, okay, thank you. And I apologize. Normally, I get text messages from Century Two, and I thought we were, had two speakers, and now we have two more. Is that Mr. Todd? I can't see your face, sir.
Good morning.
Morning, sir. There we go. You have five minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the Wichita City Council. My name is John Todd. I live at fifteen fifty-nine North Payne Avenue here in Wichita, Sudbury County, Kansas. I'm here to, to speak on the privatizing of Century Two. My opinion is that, is that privatizing Century Two in the market that we're in is premature. So you don't pick a down market to privatize. It doesn't make any sense, as far as I'm concerned, to be sitting, asking a private sector company to come in and manage a facility that is not performing. No reasonable private company, in my opinion, would, would manage Century Two without public subsidy. Or if you really looked at, you were carefully at the contract that was written, there would be, have to be some, some language in there that would reward them greatly later on down the line. Maybe an option to purchase, maybe an option to lease. Those are, are things that, that would have to be looked at very carefully. The, an outside management company, in my personal opinion, complicates future deliberation concerning maybe repurposing the building or other, other things that relate to the building. My recommendation is keep the management in, in the city at hands. If you want to be working on Century Two, maybe put out some requests for ideas concerning repurposing the building. And I might add that, that it's my understanding that our theater magnet, Mr. Bill Warren, would still entertain doing an assessment of Century Two for ideas on, on the, on the best marketing for it, and he would do it free of charge. I'd be willing to stand for questions. Thank you.
See no questions. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council members. For the record, my name is Carl Peterjohn. I'm trying to adjust this a little bit. The segregation we have here, I think, is unfortunate, and I think it would be much better to have a public forum where the citizens are in the same place with the elected officials. We did this when I was on the county commission, and I don't know any scientific evidence that indicates that we should be operating this way. I'd love to see it if there is any. My reason for speaking today, if we bring up a point, I believe the city should retain on this historic structure, the current city management, and I have a lot of concerns about this contract. I want to give the council and city leaders some praise for looking at this. I had the privilege back in the nineteen nineties under Governor Graves, participating in a state council, that we looked at state functions, and we put together kind of based on a model from another state. It was called the PERM method. PERM was an acronym. P was for privatize. E was for eliminate. R was for retain, and M was modify. And basically, they were looking at state functions to see how they could better deliver services and if the services needed to be continued to do so at a lower cost. And I think for the city to follow a model in that regard, I think would be excellent because we've tried a number of events, and I won't re, repeat the history. I do strongly agree with the three folks who spoke in front of me, but since we've got this historic structure that I don't believe has been maintained the way it should be and could be with historic tax credits, I think the city should look at, looking at a broader model. I'd be happy to provide a copy of the report that we, that was put together as part of the state commission back in the late nineteen nineties. Of course, that, I guess, just shows that I'm chronologically gifted to having participated in something back in a different century, but I think the model is as valid today as it was back then. And so I appreciate the council's time, and we stand for any questions, and if not, have a good day, gentlemen and ladies.
All right, no questions. Thank you, sir. Any other discussion on the Convention Center twenty twenty-one budget allocation? Councilmember Claycombe?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that the public's not confused. The, and I'm sure Assistant Manager Martin will talk about this. We are talking about the Convention Center budget allocation right now, and the last two speakers did not address that item. So I just want, I don't want the public to be confused about what we are voting on right now. Thank you.
Yeah, we're not voting anything with COVID either. I think we got a little, I think it blended the next item into this item, to be honest. I think that might have been what, what happened there, but good point with Councilmember Claycombe. Other questions or discussion on item one, Convention Center twenty twenty-one budget allocation? See none. Let's quick open a roll. Or, excuse me, I'll make the, I'll make the, the motion to take staff's recommended action to approve the necessary budget adjustments, authorize the expenditure's budget in twenty twenty-one for the Convention Center, and authorize staff to take the necessary actions to operate the facility with city staff in twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the vice mayor. There's no discussion on the motion. Clerk open a roll. Members cast a vote. With the result of six yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Century Two request for proposal.
Morning, Mayor Whipple. I'm a member of the City Council. Dante Martin, Assistant City Manager. You're correct, Councilman Claycombe. The item that I just presented was to provide an allocated budget for staff to operate Century Two in twenty twenty-one. The item I'm now presenting relates to a draft request for proposals for Century Two. During twenty twenty, the COVID-19 pandemic had a severe impact on the tourism and event industry. As the pandemic persists, there continues to be a marked decline in conventions, events, and performances across the nation. Locally, we experienced numerous cancellations in twenty twenty and a resizable deduction, excuse me, reduction in twenty twenty-one event bookings. This increase in cancellations in twenty twenty and a decrease in twenty twenty-one event bookings presented financial challenges to the Century Two and transient guest tax fund, which we discussed a few minutes ago. In addition, the pandemic has shifted the economics of the event industry, and we're seeing more virtual and hybrid events take the place of what had previously been in-person events. As well, customer expectations are expected to continue to evolve. Safety concerns related to the pandemic, the need and demands on, on technology and in a change in services being provided at the facility are things that we expect to encounter, and it makes it imperative that we have staff available connected to resources that are knowledgeable to the evolving best practices in the event and tourism and large meeting industry.
All right, questions to staff? Looks like we have at least two speakers, so if there's any technical questions.
Few more slides, Mayor.
I'm sorry that pause maybe, I'm sorry about that.
It's okay. Last year, after the budget was adopted, city staff began working on a draft RFP to solicit proposals for the outsourced management of Century Two. We anticipate that a private operator would bring in-depth knowledge regarding how to best position Century Two in a context of a new industry, enhance service delivery, generate cost savings and efficiencies, as well as facilitate or improve facility branding and marketing. Although we are pursuing potential outsourced management, the city would maintain ownership of Century Two, and I think that's important to note. We expect that the expertise of an outside or private operator will provide guidance on how to right-size operations going forward and also how to help reduce operating costs or operating deficits. The draft RFP was posted to wichita.gov from December twenty-nine, twenty twenty through January nineteen, twenty twenty-one to get public feedback in regard to the RFP. There were a few questions about the RFP, limited substantive suggestions or recommendations that resulted in changes to the RFP, but staff did make a point to review the comments that were made and to, to address questions that came through. If the draft RFP is approved for release, it would be competitively advertised pursuant to purchasing standards and best practices. Excuse me, solicitation processes ensure competitiveness and broad outreach to interested parties. We would advertise the RFP through the city's website, and it would be announced in the local newspaper. Additionally, a project team consisting of staff from the city manager's office as well as a purchasing, purchasing office would review qualified registered vendor lists, research firms that currently provide these services around the country, and make sure that they're aware of the announcement and the opportunity to submit a proposal. The review and recommendation process would have two phases. Phase one would require a review committee to review qualified Phase one would require a review committee to review qualified proposals. Those that are qualified would be moved on to phase two of the review process. And during phase two of the process, we would review the proposals and make recommendations to city council and potentially present a contract for approval. The city is not obligated to accept any proposals at the conclusion of the process. City has an administrative regulation 1.2, which governs our review processes. As a part of that process, the city manager would form a review committee. A review committee would be comprised of representatives of the city council, city staff, as well as interested stakeholders who don't have conflict of interest. To release the RFP for proposal, to release the RFP, there are no financial impacts to the city at this point. We're not at the point of negotiating a contract, discussing a contract. It would be to solicit proposals and review those proposals at a later date. If the recommendation is comes from the committee to from the review committee to pursue a contract, a contract would be presented to city council for approval. The Law Department has reviewed the draft RFP and has approved it for release. It's my recommendation that city council approve the release of the request for proposals. I stand for any questions that you may have, Mayor.
Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. Dante, do you have an idea of a timeline for phase one and phase two to be complete?
I would anticipate that we would have the RFP on the street within a week. I would anticipate a 60 to 90-day review process, and my hope that May of June or May-June this year, we would have completed the evaluation, the review process, and have a be in a position to make a recommendation to city council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick confirmation, I know that there were some of the partners with Century Two organizations that use the facility. This potential RFP would not reduce their access to Century Two or significantly increase the cost of any usage that they might have.
Good question, Vice Mayor. Any group that submits a proposal, it's with the understanding that they would assume any contracts the city has with current tenants and other organizations. And in terms of cost structures, they would assume the contract and current costs. The costs that would come forward through the proposal, we don't know at this time, but that would be a part of the evaluation process, looking at what costs are being proposed by potential outsourced managers. A short answer to your question, the contracts that are in place today between the city of Wichita and our tenants, as well as event organizers, would be assumed by the outside management company.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions to staff before we open up to public comment? See none at this time. Thank you.
Now?
Yep.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor Whipple and city council members. At Celeste Rosette was saved Century Two. Dante Martin pointed out in his slide that public comments have been solicited for the request for a proposal. Where were the results of these comments? Interestingly enough, I didn't see anything that commented on what the public had to say about the RFP. Isn't that why you took the comments? Who would I contact to find the results of that survey? I also thought it was interesting to note that Dante Martin noted the city was going to follow its administrative regulations for the review of the RFP contract. Did you all know that the city is currently in violation of its own administrative regulations? In fact, the CAFER doesn't note this violation. But I know that Mark Manning and I have discussed the fact that the city is currently violating the administrative regulation to have an internal auditor overlooking the contracts that exceed a certain dollar amount. You're in violation. Just wanted you to know that. It's interesting to note also that all of the contracts or exhibits that have to be included in the RFP had already rolled into short-term contracts so that they will end this year. What an amazing coincidence. The cost to these contracts to continue, like, let's say, the Wichita Symphony Orchestra or the Wurlitzer or Music Theater, you wouldn't exactly commit to the fact that the cost would stay the same. So I'll be watching carefully to see how you're going to impact these contracts for these vendors that are currently in Century Two with the RFP. When it comes to private management of a building, let's use Brandon and Rodney Stephen as an example of how the city privatized management of a public facility, the Ice Rink Center. I wonder if the public knows that all of the groups that use the Ice Center rink are currently upset and have appealed to city council to break the contract. The hockey group, the figure ice skating, they are dismayed at the condition of the Ice Rink Center. And Rodney and Brandy Stephen, in an email to city manager Leighton, pointed out they haven't paid off $300,000 of the initial $760,000 loan, and they've pleaded for another $1 million. What's this $1 million for? Why can't Brandy Brandon and Rodney Stephen run the Ice Rink Center to the extent it was before private management occurred? This is exactly what I'm worried about with Century Two, that it's going to become rundown, inaccessible, and that you're going to harm all of the public groups that Century Two was created for. Century Two is a unique historic performing arts building and Wichita's cultural center. Other historic buildings in downtown Wichita advertise as having a hip vibe. Finn Lofts, a broom factory built in the 1920s. Swoop Lofts, a former hotel built in 1915. The websites for these lofts advertise the vibe of the rapidly emerging urban core and vintage warehouses. Even the former Ennis, Macy's, Henry's, and Sutton Place are being revitalized for the Kansas Health Science Center project. I am at a loss as to why we can't revitalize Century Two, and we must continue down this path of privatization. The only difference between these historic buildings I just mentioned and Century Two is that the movement to save Century Two from privatization didn't come from businesses. It came from us, taxpayers, Wichita citizens, who said, this is the building we choose. This is the building we want to take care of. We should be advertising Century Two's unique hip, modern architecture, just like we advertise for the businessmen who smartly renovated historic buildings in downtown using historic tax credits. Century Two pays homage to the Wichitaons that came before us and was built to honor the first 100 years of the city. Citizens named it Century Two. We don't want to see signage splashed across the blue dome roof advertising somebody's firm or their family name. Century Two sits beside architecturally significant buildings, the 1967 mid-century brutalist former public library, the 1890 Proudfoot and Byrd-designed Sedgwick County Historic Museum, the 1915 Bo Arts Carnegie Library, the 1927 Neoclassical Broadview Hotel. All of these buildings are listed in the National Register of Historic Places on the Federal Registry. Mayor Whipple has bound copies of the National Register of Historic Places for Century Two and the former public library. These were sent to him by the State Historical Society in Topeka. Wichita Community Foundation, Downtown Development, the Chamber of Commerce, Project Wichita, and Visit Wichita should read these documents. City manager Leighton and each of you city council members should read them, too. This is Wichita's history, voted on and paid for by Wichita taxpayers. Century Two and the former public library deserve to be renovated and preserved for future generations to enjoy, not privatized. They're too hip for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Council members and Mr. Mayor Carl Peterjohn again, former county commissioner. I'm part of the Save Century Two movement and agree with the prior prior speaker, and just wanted to emphasize that we're going to continue to try and get information out because of the historic nature of these buildings. I'm referring to both the library as well as Century Two. And I strongly support the the comments of Celeste in this regard because we are in a challenging environment, and those who cannot retain an understanding of their past and cherish it really have a very difficult and challenging future. Appreciate your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on Century Two?
Looks like we have one more, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, City Council. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I just had one short thing. I do agree with what the former two speakers said. I would request that my comments that were mistakenly made in the in the last item be considered today. And a special request for Mr. Martin, please share the public comments with us that were left on the line. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion from the public at Century Two?
We have no more speakers.
See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there any more discussion on this item? Councilmember Plakom.
Thank you. I have just a couple of questions. I think, Dante, you might have mentioned this, but the any changes to the RFP from public comment? I know that the managers told me that the comments that we received were not most of them were not directed at the RFP.
That is correct, Councilmember Plakom. One request was that the contracts that Vice Mayor Johnson referred to be posted to the website, so staff posted those to the website. As far as questions directly related to our to the RFP, they didn't result in changes. Some of the questions, and I'll give you a sample, who's going to review the RFP? What's the process? And so staff answered that question as far as the review process. Who will make improvements to the physical structure and maintain it? So staff referred them to the RFP and answered the question. So there was no need to change the RFP as a result of that. Also, does this include city-run services such as Wichita Ticks? So once again, we pointed them to the RFP and answered the question. So none of those things required a change to the RFP. It mainly required clarification.
All right. Thank you. And then going out with an RFP does not we're not voting today to lock ourselves into a management service contract. We are just voting to go out to look at requests for proposals, correct?
You're absolutely correct. We would release a request for proposals. We would form a screening and selection committee to review those proposals. We have the option of not going forward. We could continue to to manage Century Two with city staff, or we could decide to go forward and present a contract to city council for approval.
Okay. And then one last question. What would be our anticipated length of a contract if we decided to do a professional management contract?
Yep. That's a good question. It's part of it depends on the proposals that come in, what makes the most sense based on proposals. I'll also share that the other day, the city manager and I were in a discussion with the county manager, and they talked about their review of of management contracts in relation to their relationship with In Trust Arena. So I think there's a body of knowledge for us to look at and determine what's the appropriate length, what makes the most sense for the city of Wichita as it relates to potentially outsourcing management of Century Two.
Yeah. And so I think, for example, the example, the Ice Center was brought up, and because we have an expiration on contracts, we have the ability to get out of those.
And and that's another good point, Councilmember. Regardless of the overall length anticipated in the contract, there will be exit provisions. There will be an opportunity for the city of Wichita to cancel the contract if it's not meeting our expectations.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no other dialogue. I would move that the city council take staff recommended action and approve the release of a request for proposals.
There a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. If there's no discussion on said motion, clerk open a roll. Members cast a vote. With the result of five yeas to one nay, the motion does pass.
If I could, Mayor Whipple, I'd like to thank Kim Bush, and I don't do this often, but Kim happens to be here in chambers with us today, and I really appreciate the work she's put into this. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
2021 Playground Rehabilitation and Development.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Larry Hoopmer, Principal Planner, Public Works Engineering. The item before you today is the 2021 Playground Rehabilitation and Development. The city currently has 86 playgrounds park-wide that the Park and Recreation Department takes care of. These playgrounds routinely are inspected by our trained employees to ensure safety. The 2021 funds will focus on port and play surfacing at three playgrounds, Friendship Park, Sherwood Glen and Pawnee Prairie Park playgrounds. We'll also utilize these funds to continue the use of engineered wood fiber surfacing. This helps us bring our our playgrounds up to compliance ADA. And then any other things that might be needed in terms of repairs as identified through The adopted capital improvement program in 2021-30 includes $400,000 in 2021 for playground rehabilitation and development. And with that, staff recommends that the city council initiate the project, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. Stand for any questions, should there be any.
Questions to staff? See none. Thank you. I don't think there's any open discussion over Century Two for this item. I've yet to receive a text message. See none. With that, I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to adopt the bonding resolution, authorize initiation of the project, and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk open a roll. Members cast a vote. Result of six yeas to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Start off with appointments. There are appointments that the council would like to make at this time. See no appointments. Right? Okay. Sorry, I thought. See no appointments going into just comments, then? Is there comments that members would like to make for the good of the group? Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take the opportunity to recognize a couple of individuals who passed recently. One is Municipal Court Judge Ted Griffith. He's been serving Wichita in this capacity since 2009 and a very good judge. It's a tremendous loss for the city. Also, a former park board member that I served with and president of the Pachyderm Club, John Stevens, passed away this weekend, and I just want to recognize both of those individuals.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there other comments or statements for the good of the body? See none. I will make a motion that we go into executive session. So I've moved that the city council recess into executive session for 30 minutes to receive information on offers of settlement of two civil case pursuant to KSA 754319B2 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship about pending litigation, potential litigation, legal advice. Executive session is required to protect the attorney-client privilege and the public interest. The 30 minutes will begin at 10:15 and last until 10:45. Any? Does the motion needs to be seconded?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Clerk open a roll. Members cast a vote. Very good. With six yeas to zero nays, we are will be in executive session at 10:15 to 10:45, which we will return to the chamber to to report on the executive session and to make a motion concerning the remainder of the meeting.